Oh, there you go. Nobody got my joke because you couldn't hear it. I'm sorry. Good morning, everybody. We're going to get started in just one moment. Welcome. We're back. Thank you for being here. Okay, we've established our quorum and we're going to get started. Everybody come to order. I note that the hour has come. The quorum of this council is present and council will come to order. Members will take their seats. Visitors retire to the seats outside the rails. And before proceeding, I would ask that all those present, please set your cell phones to silent and vibrate. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. To give round vacation this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor Jacqueline Capers of the Disney Nichols African Methodist Episcopal AME Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Squiller. I would ask all members and guests, please rise.
Good morning and blessings unto all of you. Let us look to the God of our fathers, our ancestors, and of all people. Dear Lord, we come before you today inviting your presence into this assembly. We thank you for another day that we've never seen before. We thank you for every elected official, for every staff member, and every administrator. We thank you for an opportunity to handle the affairs of the city of Philadelphia. We come before you now because if we never needed you, we need you now. We need you to lead and guide and to direct and give wisdom as these officials handle the business and the affairs of the city of Philadelphia. We need you as they address the gun violence. We need you as they address affordable housing. We need you as they address the drug epidemic. We need you as they treat all people equally. So, God, we ask today that you might restore and reset. Reset us, oh God, so that we have love and charity for our neighbor. Give new hope, new joy, new determination to do the work that's at hand. Bless their families and bless all those assembled here today as they seek you for wisdom and guidance. They may not always agree on everything, but give them the mind to work together in unity, one with another. So now, we lift you up and we ask you to restore the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. This is our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Counsel will be at ease. Thank you. And Pastor, thank you again for your spiritual forgiveness this morning. We really appreciate it. Before we proceed with the business we have before us today, I would like to have a moment of silence for a good friend of ours, a good friend of Philadelphia, a son of our great city. Person has done so much for the city and for our community and for all of us. We've all had the ability to interact. I'd like to have a moment of silence for our good friend, Dr. Herbert H. Luss. Please have a moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much. Okay, at this time, I would like to name the officers of the City Council as a part of our reorganization. Please be advised that by a vote of the Democratic Members of Council, the Honorable Curtis Jones Jr. was elected Majority Leader, the Honorable Mark F. Squiller was elected Majority Whip, and the Honorable Cindy Bass was elected Majority Deputy Whip of the City Council of Philadelphia. It says here, applause. Thank you. Okay, back to business. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 15, 2022, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 15, 2022 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 15, 2022. Stand and approve, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the Members of Council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you. Chair, thanks to Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilman Squiller?
I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the consideration of bills vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking subsequent action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or a resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on the returning of bill to that resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be published and included in the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilman Squiller may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And the clerk will please read the messages from the mayor or any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution of reappointing James Oars Jr. to the position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Property Assessment, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 3861 North 13th Street in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1942, 1944, 1946, 1950, 1952, 1954, 1956, North 3rd Street, 1923, 1927, 1934, 1935, North 4th Street, 1925, North 5th Street, 301, 303, 305, 307, 309, 433, 437, 537, West Burke Street, 204, North Bodine Street, 401, 405, 407, West Houston Street, 1916, 1922, 1940, North Leaf Gal Street, 313, 420, and 421, West Norris Street, 1910, 1923, 1926, 1927, 1930, 1931, 1936, 1951, 1952, 1954, 1958, and 1961, North Orianna Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Thank you for those messages from the mayor. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the clerk will please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill and one resolution entitled An Ordinance Providing for the Substitution to Qualified Electors of the City of Philadelphia of an Amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to change the requirements for contributions and minimum balance of the Budget Stabilization Reserve and make other technical changes.
Verge the committee.
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter changing the requirement for contributions and minimum balance of the Budget Stabilization Reserve and making other technical changes.
Verge the committee.
Councilman Thomas offers one bill and one resolution entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code and Title of Misalinas to create a new chapter 213300 authorizing the establishment of a rewards program for the provision of information related to certain civil or criminal violations and making various changes to Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code and Title of Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity and Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code and Title Traffic Code to remove and consolidate prior provisions concerning rewards programs.
Verge the committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Philly Junior Roller Derby All-Stars on their victory at the 2022 Junior Roller Derby Association Championships.
Next week's calendar. Little rusty. That will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers two bills and nine resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades and a portion of City Plan Number 120 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Sharsworth Street and Harland Street each from 22nd Street to 23rd Street.
Verge the committee.
And on his own behalf, an ordinance amending Section 211203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Appointments to Citizens Police Oversight Commission by revising prohibited activities for commissioners.
Verge the committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1600 through 40 North 9th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1942, 1944, 1946, 1950, 1952, 1954, and 1956, North 3rd Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1,001,026 through 36 Fairmount Avenue, including the former 671 and 681 through 87 North 11th Street and 1015 through 29 Mellon Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3812, 3826, 3834, 3846, and 3850, North Comback Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1402, 1403, 1405, 1407, 1408, 1409, 1411, 1412, 1413, 1414, 1417, 1418, 1421, 1422, 1423, 1424, 1425, 1426, 1427, 1429, 1431, 1432, 1433, 1435, 1436, 1438, 1441, 1443, 1445, 1446, 1447, 1449, 1457, 1462, 1513, 1514, 1532, 1536, 1546, 1559, 1561, 1611, 1613, 1629, 1631, 1633, 1635, and 1641, North Marston Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1309, 1324, 1347, 1348, 1314, 10, 1412, 1421, 1424, 1427, 1428, 1429, 1433, 1437, 1440, 1443, 1451, 1452, 1454, 1457, 1459, 1463, 1512, 1516, 1519, 1534, North Myrtlewood Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 3861 North 13th Street in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And on his own behalf, a privileged resolution calling on the First Judicial District of Pennsylvania to fully implement the Philadelphia Gun Violence Protection Program as established in Chapter 102300 of the Philadelphia Code and further authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Legislative Oversight and Public Safety to hold hearings on the impact implementation of red flag laws could have on gun violence in Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing September 2022 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia to spread awareness about leukemia, lymphoma, and myeloma, and support patients affected by blood cancer.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers four bills and three resolutions. And titled An Ordinance Establishing Park Regulations in the Vicinity of South 17th Street and Dickinson Street, Ellsworth Street and South 20th Street, Federal Street and South 15th Street, Federal Street and South 20th Street, Federal Street and South 21st Street, Federal Street and South 22nd Street, and Federal Street and South 23rd Street, and Alter Street, and An Ordinance Establishing Park Regulations in the Vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 18th Street, Cater Street and South 19th Street, Tany Street and South Street, South 17th Street and Fitzwater Street, Cleveland Street and Carpenter Street, and An Ordinance Establishing Park Regulations in the Vicinity of Titan Street and South 19th Street, Oakford Street and South 21st Street, Wharton Street and Point Breeze Avenue, South 15th Street and Wharton Street, Reed Street and South 18th Street to South 22nd Street, and South 17th Street and Reed Street, and An Ordinance Establishing Park Regulations in the Vicinity of Webster Street and Broad Street, South 11th Street and Bainbridge Street, Kimball Street and South 11th Street.
Those four bills will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming Christian Street between Broad and 20th Streets, Black Doctors Row.
This week's calendar. Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming the 1900 Block of South 17th Street Geraldine Gravesway.
Next week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution celebrating the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Leon H. Sullivan, the Lion of Zion, on the occasion of his 100th birthday.
This week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gautier offers six resolutions and titled a privileged resolution, I mean, I'm sorry, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 759, 761, 763, 773, 779, and 783, Palace Street, 4041 Cambridge Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District. And a non-privileged...
Next week's calendar. Sorry, folks, I have a little challenge.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 1834, 1837, 1840, 1846, 1848, South Allison Street, 4322 Lancaster Avenue, 767, 769, and 771 Palace Street, 5517 Pascal Avenue, 3909 Wallace Street, 642 North 39th Street, and 713 North 43rd Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 5112 Ludlow Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution designating Thursday, October 13, 2022, as Children's Environmental Health Day in the city of Philadelphia and recognizing the launch of the Philadelphia Regional Center for Environmental Health.
Next week's calendar.
Privilege, Mr. President?
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the Drexel University Black Alumni Council for the release of its first book, A Legacy to Share: Navigating Life's Changes and Celebrating Our Greatest Achievements.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution renaming the 600 Block of North 37th Street Reverend Harry Moore Way, and that's non-privileged, Mr. President.
This week's calendar. Next week's calendar.
Councilman Driscoll offers one resolution, a non-privileged resolution, and titled a resolution adding Joseph A. Ferko Memorial Boulevard to the street signs on Bridge, on Bridge Street between Teccone Street and Richmond Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neill offers one bill and titled An Ordinance Authorizing the Plating Upon City Plan Number 388 of a Right-of-Way for various public utility purposes in vicinity of the intersection of West Crown Avenue and Morrell Avenue.
Verge the committee.
Councilman Squiller offers one bill on behalf of Council President Clark and titled An Ordinance Authorizing an Increase in the Non-Electoral Indebtedness of the City Within the Pennsylvania Constitutional Limit, authorizing the Bond Committee to Sell Bonds at Public or Private Negotiated Sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes.
Verge the committee.
Councilman O offers two resolutions. A privileged resolution recognizing October 2022 as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, congratulating, and thanking the United States Marine Corps on the occasion of its 247th anniversary, and that was privileged.
This week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is reports from committees, and the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and Members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill Number 220634, entitled An Ordinance Establishing a Neighborhood Improvement District to be known as the North Broad Business Improvement District, in an area that generally includes both sides of North Broad Street from the north side of Spring Garden Street to the south side of Indiana Avenue, excluding the 2700 and 2900 blocks on the west side of the street, beginning with 510 North Broad Street and continuing to 2929 North Broad Street. It also includes 1300 Fairmount Avenue, 1406 Ridge Avenue, 1408 Ridge Avenue, 1363 West Seltzer Street, 1361 West Silver Street, and 1362 West Silver Street, designating North Broad Renaissance, the legal name of which is Avenue North Renaissance Incorporated, which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for and report concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with North Broad Renaissance relating to the district, and authorizing North Broad Renaissance to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act. Respectfully report that it is considered the same and returns you attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 220634.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit the first reading this day of Bills Number 220634. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just read from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed or have had its first reading calendar, it will be on the second reading calendar at our next session of council. As in no additional bills on the first reading, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on final passes calendar today. Numbers 220674, 220675, 220678, 220679, 220680, 220681, 220683, 220685, 220686, 220687, 220688, 220691, 220696, 220697, 220698, and 220700.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by, interesting, Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries and we will consider the resolution considered agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on today's consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading to final passes calendars today. Bills, resolutions, number 220667, 220673, 220676, 220677, 220682, 220694, 220695, and 220007. All other bills or resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we consider any resolutions and bills, we will consider our public comment session. Be a little different today. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for passable action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to the sergeant-at-arms at the table set up for this purpose in the hallway just outside the council chambers. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order with your name appears on this sign-up sheet, and you will have three minutes. Let's see. We have a somewhat lengthy, we're going to do three minutes today. You will have three minutes to speak. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the three-minute limit. three-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks, and once three minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. Also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on same subject matter. Just want to remind individuals that from time to time when we have the significant volume of individuals testifying, we may alter the time limit. Today, it will be three minutes. I would ask the chief clerk, please read the name of our first speaker on the list.
Lindsay Malden, commenting on Two-Two-Zero-Six-Six-Seven.
Here? Here? One more time, Mr. Decker, and maybe across the hall. Is anyone across the hall? Everybody's here? Okay, Mr. Decker, just read the next name. We'll just come back.
Michael Smith.
One more time?
Michael Smith.
Mr. Smith? Okay, next name.
Melissa Wheeler Gerber.
Ms. Gerber? Ms. Gerber? Okay. Next name?
Jose DiMarco.
Mrs. DiMarco?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, council folks in Philadelphia, I'm here today. Oh, okay, sorry. I'm here today to speak about my brother Michael Henson today. I met Michael Henson maybe two decades ago, and I applied for work at a place called Colors, an organization Michael founded. And at that time, Michael stressed to me the importance of black excellence. In fact, Michael demanded black excellence, and he wanted that from all of his employees, and I learned that the hard way, working with Michael. But I say that to say this is the way Michael Henson lived his life. Michael was the former GLBT liaison to John Street. And we had many conversations. Okay. I'm really sorry, because I'm a little nervous.
It's okay.
So anyway, Michael and I would discuss what it was like being born black into this country. You're born right away into a lot of inequity, you're born right into systemic racism, you're born into interactions with the criminal justice system, all of those things that we as people of color have to deal with in this country, we're born to it. And Michael and I talked about how that impacted us as people, and how that, not only that, it impacted us as queer people. On top of that, we had double burdens to bear. And no matter how heavy the burdens became or what happened, Michael was always there, whether it was for homeless people, whether it was for the GLBT community, whether it was for calling out racism in government, in homeless shelters, uh, and in HIV and AIDS funding. Michael was one of the first people in Philadelphia that brought attention to these inequities. So I'm here today to bring your attention to this, and also to remember Michael for the wonderful and good person he was and all of the, uh, he was a compliment to Philadelphia. He really was a compliment to Philly, and I, we wanted to say too, Michael deserves a mural in this city, along with Gloria Casares. They were both, uh, GLBT liaisons, and unfortunately, they both died very young after making incredible advancements for Philadelphia, so. Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry for all the noise.
Thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is David Fair.
Mr. Fair? You here?
David Fair.
Next name?
Chris Bartlett. Chris Bartlett. David Fair.
Three minutes, yes.
Good morning. I am deeply honored to be here today to support the issuance of a proclamation honoring Michael S. Henson, Jr. My name is David Fair, and I'm here today both as a lifetime friend of Michael's, as well as treasurer of Self Incorporated, where Michael served as chief executive officer. Michael came to Philadelphia in his late teens, and while his dream was to become a professional dancer, he got distracted from that goal because of his fear and anger at the lack of efforts to prevent the spread of HIV disease in African-American communities in Philadelphia. He was an early volunteer and later a staff member at B-Bashi, one of the first agencies organized to combat aging communities of color in the nation. He later co-founded the Colors Organization, specifically to target young gay men and transgendered people of color with the HIV prevention message. He later went on to start or work for a number of organizations aimed at empowering LGBTQ people of color to be full citizens and to determine their own futures. As an assistant managing director in the street administration, Michael helped to develop the first transgender medical clinic in Philadelphia, and also led the effort to add gender identity to the Fair Practices Act. In addition to his LGBTQ-focused work, he also helped develop a ten-year plan to end homelessness in the city, a plan that is just as relevant today as it was fourteen years ago. Five years ago, Michael was appointed to lead Self Incorporated, the city's largest provider of emergency and transitional housing. In that role, he doubled the agency's budget from four million to eleven million dollars, creating a wealth of new approaches to end homelessness in Philadelphia. Michael's work among young people, people with HIV, the addicted, and the homeless ranged from multimillion-dollar projects to just a few months ago, quiet effort to find burial plots for those who had died without family or loved ones. Few Philadelphians have led a life of such commitment to people who were young, or different, or unhoused, or feared, or hated. Michael organized communities to empower themselves, not to empower himself, and in ways that would make them or keep them healthy and thriving. Michael dedicated every breathing moment to what he felt was his calling in all the environments in which he lived and worked, to leave people better off than he had found them. Who better to honor than this man of courage and vision? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is Chris Bartlett.
Mr. Bartlett?
Chris Bartlett? Bartlett?
Next speaker.
Roxanne Sutachi. Roxanne Sutachi.
Next speaker.
Lizbeth Rodriguez. Lizbeth Rodriguez.
Okay, next speaker.
Talia Taylor. Commenting on Two-Two-Zero-Six-Eight-Two.
Morning. Good morning, everyone, good morning. Uh, my name is Sister Talia Taylor, I'm president of the City of Dreams Coalition, and also chair of the Social Music Movement, and I'm here to show support for the resolution from Councilman Kenyatta Johnson from PNB Rock. He is momentum to the city, and as I've used music as a therapy and have over two-hundred artists alone in the city and dealing with those demographics, yes, it's very tiring, yes, we're tired, but that just shows how much hate all over the world for our young black men. It doesn't matter, it just seems like we're dying regardless of what we do, but that's what just shows, makes it more important to even show the city of how much he meant to the city, of how much inspiration he gave to the city, so hopefully, this will be able to inspire other kids to do more, get better, get out, get, even get out the city, get out the four-block radius, and that to show that such the empowerment of what he has contributed, not just only to music, but to his community, to his family, and to his friends. He is very well-loved, very well-loved, and he has done a lot at such a young age, and for where he came from, but we also have to shed light on the city of the gang issues. Our own gang issues in Germantown, I had to leave my own home because of all the back-and-forth with PNB and other, other places. So it's a bittersweet moment, but he has been such an accomplishment for the city. We really need to use it as a platform to show that we can, our young men can thrive, they can thrive, they can do better, their wishes, their dreams can come true, but then at the same time, we need to learn how to stop, start, having our young men start loving each other, because right now, that's just wicked, it's hateful, and they're on demon time, so I support the resolution, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is Obona Hagens.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Obona Hagens. I'm a retired teacher, I published a hip-hop magazine called Philly Word Magazine, and it was one of the only hip-hop magazines that focused on the positive that our youth were doing at the time, uh, from like nineteen ninety-nine to about two thousand and seven. Um, I'm very saddened to have to support this resolution, Twenty-Two-O-Six-Eighty-Two, honoring the life and legacy of Philadelphia hip-hop artist Rakim Hashim Allen, AKA PNB Rock. He was a bright and shining example of what one can accomplish when the arts are supported. As a father masterman in high school, one who was in the virtual academy, I really understand the importance of the arts, and I encourage council to not only support this resolution, but to support the arts, to do all that can be done to financially support the arts, because the arts can certainly help to reduce violence, which is running rampant, not only in Philadelphia, but in many urban areas in the United States. The issue of gun violence has to be solved. We must provide opportunities for our citizens and promote those opportunities. In the memory of PNB Rock, I encourage the city to promote the positive to the youth, especially of Philadelphia, on a regular basis to influence their actions, because as the scriptures say, as a man thinks, so is he. So if we promote positive things to our youth, we will have a much better chance of solving this violence issue in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is Peter Winslow.
Good morning, Mr. Winslow, good to see you in person.
Nice to see you too, President Clark. My name is Peter Winslow, I'm a Philadelphia resident. I speak to you today as president of a smart collaboration, as a supporter of Toxic Free Philly, and as a candidate you recommended to Mayor Kenny for appointment to the initial Philadelphia Public Financial Authority Board of Directors. Thank you, President Clark, and members of the city council, for this opportunity to offer public comment and support of Resolution Number Two-One-Zero-Nine-One-Three and related matters. I spoke to you last week urging you to preserve, in Councilmember Bass's words, the very essence of democratic governance by passing Resolution Number Two-One-Zero-Nine-One-Three with respect to implementation of the HOPS Bill, ordinance number Two-Zero-Zero-Four-Two-Five-A, and a similar resolution with respect to implementation of ordinance number Two-One-Zero-Nine-Five-Six-A to establish the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority. I repeat those requests. Last week, I was critical of Mayor Kenny for breaking his oath of office to execute and enforce the ordinances of the city with fidelity. Aside from being wrong concerning the substance of these issues, he is violating the very essence of democratic governance. This week, I address my criticism to you. Was Mayor Kenny listening when President Biden spoke to us from Independence Hall about the soul of America and warned us of the threats to democratic governance that we face? Were you listening? Is he and you, so lacking in self-awareness, so enmeshed in business as usual, not to recognize this danger to our institutions? As Pogo observed in Self-Recognition, we has seen the enemy, and they is us. As long as the city council allows the mayor to ignore without challenge the laws and policies you establish through the exercise of your legislative function, you are complicit in the crisis of democracy facing our city, state, and country. Philadelphia can employ a strong mayor system without empowering an unconstrained mayor through the passivity of the city council. Part of your job is ensuring that the mayor does his job, so politely, yet firmly, please assert your prerogatives. Please command Mayor Kenny's attention through subpoena and litigation, please protect the integrity of the city council, preserve our democratic processes. Thank you for your attention to these matters.
Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is Cara DeCarlo. Commenting on Two-Two-Zero-Six-Eight-Two.
Good morning. Hi, good morning, everyone. My name's Cara DeCarlo, and I am co-owner of Rough Nation Records and executive director of City of Dreams Coalition. So I just wanted to speak on PNB Rock for a minute. He was a phenomenal influence on the city and music industry. He had fans ranging from all ages because of his creativity and talent in music. When I went to his memorial service last Friday, it was sad, but even more, it was amazing to me because the fans and the residents of the neighborhood made it seem like it was just, you know, a fun and positive celebration of his life. Um, you know, the, I saw nothing but smiles on people's faces, which tells me he did just that, he put nothing but smiles on people's faces, and that's how he would want to be remembered. When I had met him, he was just a pleasure to be around. I knew he, deep down inside, he was genuinely a great person. What happened was a tragedy, especially because where he was in L.A., was, he was there for a celebration, um, for an achievement that, you know, he had, he had reached. He will forever be remembered and missed amongst the community and the music industry.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Chris Bartlett. The next speaker is Chris Bartlett. Commenting on 220683.
Good morning. I'd like to thank Council President Clark and Councilmember Brooks for the opportunity to speak in honor of Michael S. Hinson Jr., a dear friend of mine of 30 years. I'm Chris Bartlett. He/him/his pronouns Executive Director of the Williamway LGBT Community Center. I first met Mike Hinson at the AIDS Service Organization Babashi in 1990. I just started my job at the Safecards Gay Men's Health Project. And when I went to meet Michael, his arms were folded, and he was glaring a little bit at me because I don't think he knew who I was. But by the end of that meeting, we were friends for a lifetime. And I feel a tremendous loss at his passing three weeks ago, as I know many in this room do, because I know you, you worked with him, whether that was in the Mayor Streets administration or his work most recently itself. But I just wanted to note some of the huge achievements he made and will continue to make through his legacy. I remember most directly his, his quote to us, which he repeated frequently, which is that "The clearest lesson for us as LGBT communities is to be clear and unapologetic about what we want. That if we believe in what we want and ask for it, we deserve it. And if we keep up on people about their promises, that we can get everything that we need." And I saw him do this many times over the years, and we did, in fact, get what we as communities needed. In the 90s, he invited me and David Acosta, then Director of the Gelay Project, to march over to the Health Department. I'd never marched anywhere other than Act Up Philadelphia, but he said, "Come with me to the Health Department." And we made a claim to the Office of the AIDS Activities Coordinating Office for increased funding for AIDS prevention and care. And we received that funding just through the, the data that he had with him, the case he made for the need for, for our communities. He also noticed that there were no data on LGBT communities, so under Mayor Streets administration, he created an LGBT census. And we collected data about our communities so we could better make a case for our needs. And that census has been sort of the base for all the work that's followed since then. He believes strongly in leadership development and invested in the Gay Men's Health Leadership Academy, focusing on sending dozens of Black and Brown leaders to retreats to expand their leadership opportunities. Many of those leaders are now the generation who will fulfill upon Michael's legacy. And that visionary investment in leadership, if there were to be one thing we could do, I would say, let's keep that work moving forward. His voice was uncompromising, whether at the Homeless Memorial Day, or at a Human Relations Commission meeting on neighborhood racism, or here in city council. His voice was uncompromising, and we continue to hear it today as an ancestor. Over the past year, we focused on services for homeless LGBTQ people, a partnership between Self and Williamway to make rental assistance possible. And I'll say today, we're committed to having that work go forward. To finish up, I just want to say that Michael's primary commitment to our city, to our communities, to his families, was one of love. And I hope that as we make our commitments to his legacy moving forward, we'll remember that commitment to love for those who have the least voice in our city and to maintain that commitment and legacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Uptown Gio, commenting on 2202682.
Not here. Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll get that corrected next time.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Just want to say, for those that are listening, we had a lot of people that called in that did not show up today. I just want to make it clear, when you call in, you must be here. We're not, technology does not allow us to have a hybrid where you can call in and be online on a mic. So once we've gone to in-person, it has to be uniform based on the technology. So you must be here to testify with public comment. You may always send in any comments, recommendations, or positions on a bill through phlcouncil.com. But in order to testify, you must be here in person, just for the record, for those that didn't show up today. Okay, that concludes our public comment session. And our calendar will now continue, and we will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of a resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Councilwoman Brooks, I think you had a resolution on the consent agenda that you would like to be removed, so we can have a singular vote on that. What, what, what's that resolution number?
Resolution number 220687.
Okay, well, Mr. Decker will make sure. We will remove that from the resolution consent agenda. It'll be in the regular final passes.
683. 220683.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Sorry, Mr. Decker. You get to start reading the titles.
Resolution number 220683 is under the resolution honoring the life and achievements of Michael Hinson Jr., whose art, leadership, and activism established community strongholds for Black and Brown LGBTQ youth and led to critical civil rights advancements for LGBTQ people in Philadelphia.
Okay, I will now ask the clerk, please read the title of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of a resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will immediately be removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on our day's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Resolution number 220674 entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia police officers Taylor Seidler and Paul Watson for protecting the lives of community residents by immediately and heroically springing to action in response to a shooting at Shepherd Recreation Center on August 16, 2022. And Resolution Number 220675 entitled a resolution supporting the National Minority Business Development Agency and recognizing October 3, 2022 through October 7, 2022, as Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Med Week, which provides critical information, resources, opportunities, and inspiration to the minority business community. And Resolution Number 220678 entitled a resolution honoring Ben Beauregard Nevens for her service as president of PIDZ and wishing her the best in her future endeavors. And Resolution Number 220679 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2809, 2822, 2824, 2825, 2826, 2827, and 2828 Wharton Street, 1308 through 26, 1323, 1327, and 1355 South Dover Street, and 1351 South 29th Street, including 1354 South Dover Street located in the 2nd Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220680 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2609 through 27 Sears Street, including 1308 through 14 South 26th Street located in the 2nd Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220681 entitled a resolution also naming the 1700 block of South 22nd Street, Emma Hatton Wilson Way, to honor Emma Hatton Wilson for a lifetime of service to South Philadelphia community. And Resolution Number 220683 entitled a resolution honoring the life and achievements of Michael Hinson Jr., whose art, leadership, and activism established community strongholds for Black and Brown LGBTQ youth and led to critical civil rights advancements for the LGBTQ people in Philadelphia. Mr. President, Councilwoman Brooks would be liking, like to be recognized on this resolution?
Councilwoman Kim, did you, did you want to be recognized?
Councilwoman Brooks, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brooks, I'm going to call, you want, you want to, we're going to call, okay, let's be, go ahead, Councilwoman. You want to be asked for formally to be removed from the, okay.
Yes. I move that Resolution 220683 be removed from the consent agenda and be placed on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. That resolution will be on the regular resolution calendar today.
And, continue with the consent agenda, Mr. President?
Yeah, good.
Resolution Number 220685 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority of the redevelopment in Urbano, Noel of a portion of the Hattieington, Urbano area, Unit Number One, identified by house number and street address as 5217 through 5219 Havreford Avenue. And Resolution Number 220686 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia Soccer Club '05 Copper Rage Girls Soccer Team. And Resolution Number 220687 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2318 East Boston Street and 2160 East Gordon Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220688 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2863, 2868 Amber Street, 2044, 2077, 2077 East Birch Street, 2118, 2138, 2142, and 2150 Belmar Street, 2115, 2140 East Mamaw Street, 21100, 2108, 2117, 2120, and 2138 East Orleans Street, and 2106 and 2150 East Stella Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220691 entitled a resolution also naming Shank Street between 10th Street and Alder, Alder Street as Julian E. Angaluki Way. And Resolution Number 220697 entitled a resolution recognizing September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia in honor of childhood cancer patients, caregivers, survivors, and those children who have succumbed to the disease. And Resolution Number 220697 entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring the life and legacy of Joey DiFrancesco. And Resolution Number 220698 entitled a resolution honoring and recognizing Wilfredo P. Rojas for his towering achievements as a leading civil rights activist for the Latino community in Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 220700 entitled a resolution recognizing September as National Recovery Month in Philadelphia and celebrating the 21st Annual Pro Act Recovery Walks to promote recovery and work to end the stigma surrounding drug and alcohol addiction.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second. That each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution on the consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes today. Mr. Decker, I'm going to call 220683.
A resolution honoring the life and achievements of Michael Hinson Jr., whose art, leadership, and activism established community strongholds for Black and Brown LGBTQ youth and led to critical civil rights advancements for LGBTQ people in Philadelphia. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to say a few words. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting my resolution to honor the prolific community activist, organizer, leader, Mike Hinson, who recently passed away at the young age of 55. He has been a fire to me in my office in my short tenure. You know, Mike was a trailblazer, a relentless advocate, a fearless voice for those who often were silenced in places of power. As a queer Black man that faced incredible adversity, which only further inspired him to fight for those who pushed against the margins. As our city has struggled over the past few years to respond to the pandemic in ways that supports working class Black and Brown communities, people experiencing homelessness, queer people, and other marginalized identities. And we think about those disparities and how we can improve, we should be looking to Mike Hinson's legacy as a path forward. Hinson transformed the way our city addressed the HIV/AIDS crisis, ensuring that queer, Black, Brown, homeless community members were prioritized in receiving services. He forged creative bold ways to make the city's service and public health supports accessible and safe for those who were often left behind. He was a friend, a caring mentor, and an outspoken truth teller who wasn't afraid to call racism, homophobia, classism out for what it was. So I just want to take a minute, a minute to remember Mike Hinson, a queer Black role model and beloved figure in all movement spaces. And I want to thank you, Council President. And I would like to move for an adoption of this resolution and request that members stand to indicate their vote in support of this resolution.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second. That that resolution be adopted. Shall the members please rise to indicate your aye vote? Thank you. The ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 220667.
A resolution declaring the City of Philadelphia's commitment to protect and expand reproductive rights and abortion access in the face of extraordinary threats and authorizing a task force to advance recommendations and coordinate initiatives to ensure that all Philadelphians, as well as those who seek care here, are able to exercise their fundamental right to bodily autonomy.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you very much, Council President. Healthcare and reproductive healthcare today is as much a local issue as it is a state and national one. And on behalf of my cosponsors, Councilmembers Katia and Brooks, all the women of city council and this body, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Let the record reflect that Councilman O'Neil was a nay on Resolution Number 220667. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 220673.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2151 Fairlil Hill Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220676.
A resolution congratulating Philadelphia native Quinta Brunson for her winning the 2022 Emmy Award for Outstanding Writing and Comedy Series for her hit television show, Abbott Elementary.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again with pride, Philly pride. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, Resolution Number 220677.
A resolution congratulating Cheryl Lee Ralph on her historic 2022 Emmy win for Outstanding Supporting Actress in a Comedy Series for her role in Abbott Elementary.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very proud of her. I'm very proud of her. She's a 4th district resident. I just wanted to put that on the record. And I move for the adoption.
Thank you. Councilman, is that the lady that I saw sitting next to Senator Hughes at the award ceremony?
Yeah, I think it was.
I thought that looked like, I thought that looked like. Thank you, it's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220682.
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Philadelphia's own Rakim Hashim Allen, known worldwide by the stage name P&amp;B Rock on the occasion of his untimely passing.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I also want to acknowledge my colleague, who's the councilwoman of P&amp;B Rock, Councilwoman Cindy Bass. Councilwoman, would you like to say a few remarks on behalf of Mr. Rashid Allen?
Well, thank you, Councilman. I wanted to, number one, thank you for the resolution that's being offered. This was clearly someone who had a considerable impact on so many lives, not just in Philadelphia, not just across the country, but around the globe. And so when we lose any of our young people, it's a tragedy. You know, this was someone who had made an impact, and he will surely be missed, not just in Germantown, but again, around the globe. And so this is something that we have to really look at and take very, very serious. Gun violence doesn't just happen in our neighborhoods. It happens everywhere. And so, again, Councilman, I just really want to say thank you for your hard work in bringing this issue to light so that we talk about it, we dialogue about it, and we don't forget it, most importantly, so that we can prevent it from happening again in the future. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. And just, Council President, before I call for the adoption of the resolution, I remember meeting this young man, and actually, and he just reminded me, was at Councilman Curtis Jones' district day up in Winfield, right? And that's when I first started to hear about him. And then also in South Philadelphia, well, in high school, we both participated in the Stop the Violence General Assembly for our young people. What stuck out was not so much just his artistry as an entertainer and as a rapper, most importantly, his mannerisms and how he was so respectful. But at the same time, he was a rapper. So that stuck out in terms of his character. And beyond that, we saw all across the city of Philadelphia that he used his platform to give back and support and inspire so many other young people. And so wanted to take this opportunity to honor his life and his legacy. But also similar to what Councilwoman Cindy Bass talks about, the gun violence that we're seeing taking place here in the city of Philadelphia is not only limited to our neighborhoods, it's also in all urban neighborhoods all across our country. And that's why we must keep our pulse on addressing this particular issue. Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Hold on a second.
Would you like for me to offer the amendment at this particular term? I'm on it. Yep, thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to Resolution Number 220682. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment. You're welcome, Council President.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly second, that the amendment, the Resolution Number 220682, be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilmember Johnson for motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Be adopted.
Be adopted.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Decker, please read the title of 220694.
A resolution recognizing and honoring the life and accomplishments of Charlene Curtis.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to recognize Charlene Curtis as a real powerhouse here in Philadelphia sports who really went unrecognized. Ms. Curtis was the first African-American female coach of the Temple Owls Women's Basketball Team. And so we just recently lost her over the summer, and we wanted to recognize the considerable contributions that she made to women's sports here in Philadelphia and across the nation. So, that being said, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 220695.
A resolution also naming the 2,000 through 2,100 blocks of Lehigh Avenue as Pastor Benjamin Smith Senior Drive in honor of the late Pastor Benjamin Smith Senior to commemorate his 41 years of vibrant preaching at Deliverance Evangelistic Church and the economic revitalization of Lehigh Avenue that occurred under his leadership.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. We share that strip of real estate there. You have one side of Lehigh Avenue, and I have the other side where Deliverance is actually located. But I have to tell you, last Saturday, the entire corridor along that stretch was completely covered. They must have had 1,000 people out to see and support the renaming of the 2,100 block of Lehigh Avenue after Pastor Benjamin Smith Senior, who was the founder of Deliverance. And again, the sign is already up, but I did want to recognize a few of the key players that made it happen. Pastor Spalding, of course, the current pastor of Deliverance, as well as former sheriff and state rep Jewel Williams, Dot Newton, and so many more. We were joined by Congressman Evans and many, many others. And, you know, Pastor Smith was a great person who was a founder and a visionary for Philadelphia, spreading the gospel and growing this movement. And so with that being said, I really want to thank everyone for their support, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution Number 220695 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill Number 220007.
An ordinance amending Chapter 14, 500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending a section as proposed to be added by Bill Number 210778 entitled the AHB Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay District to add certain areas within the area bounded by Havreford Avenue, 38th Street, Walnut Street, and 46th Street to the district.
This bill had been read on two different days. Requesting now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Brooks. Councilman Driscoll. Councilwoman Gautier. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas. Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 13, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirm to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, Philly Junior Roller Derby All-Stars on their victory at the 2022 Junior Roller Derby Association Championships, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling on the 1st Judicial District of Pennsylvania to fully implement the Philadelphia Gun Violence Prevention Program as established in Chapter 10, 2300 of the Philadelphia Code and further authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Legislative Oversight and Public Safety to hold hearings on the impact implementation of red flag laws could have on gun violence in Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say a few words about this. This council has taken steps on its own to try to safeguard the citizens in many different ways as it relates to gun violence. All too often, other governments, other entities, other departments stifle that progress we attempt to make, sometimes by lawsuits, sometimes by court decisions, sometimes by inaction. We passed the red flag law long before it got on the radar of the federal government, long before sensible advocates for gun control figured it out. What it calls for is that someone on Monday stands up in the schoolyard and says, "I don't like this school anymore. I'm going to come back and shoot it up." On Tuesday, we should believe them, and we should swear out an affidavit before a court to remove guns from that premises until that individual can stand before a judge or a competent group of people to determine that they are not a threat to themselves and a threat to others. So when you pass a law, sometimes people just ignore it. And that bothers me. Well, you know, we don't want to overstep our authority. But we do, as my colleague Johnson says, do want to step up to the plate. All you have to do is get on Facebook, and you'll see young men and women with guns saying, "I'm going to go over to Isaiah Thomas's block, and I'm going to shoot up the block." We should believe them, and we should swear out affidavits to remove those firearms from individuals, not to mention domestic situations where people, because of their emotions and feelings, decide that not only, matter of fact, don't we have a plaque in that hallway as it relates to domestic violence? So, when we pass sensible gun laws, we will not be ignored. We will hold people accountable for laws we pass to make sure they implement them. And if they need changing, we're grown up, we got a big boy on, we will adjust them accordingly to fit the requirements of the laws. But you will not just say, "I don't like city council's law," and ignore it. We will have a hearing on this, a joint hearing, and we will look at its potential to stem some of the gun violence in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Thank you, Councilman. Can I get a second? It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing September 2022 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia to spread awareness about leukemia, lymphoma, and myeloma and support patients affected by blood cancer, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designating Thursday, October 13, 2022, as Children's Environmental Health Day in the city of Philadelphia and recognizing the launch of the Philadelphia Regional Center for Environmental Health, introduced today by Councilwoman Gautier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier. Thank you, it's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Drexel University Black Alumni Council for the release of its first book, "A Legacy to Share: Navigating Life's Changes and Celebrating Our Greatest Achievements", introduced today by Councilwoman Gautier. Councilwoman Gautier, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing October 2022 as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman O. Introduced today by Councilman O, Mr. President.
Sorry, I'm having more challenges with everybody else's mask than I am with my own. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and thanking the United States Marine Corps on the occasion of its 247th anniversary, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Adoption of the resolution, thank you.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. We will now move to our speeches. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. And I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the nearly 150 people who came to City Hall yesterday for my wealthy, wealthy tax, a people's hearing. We saw nearly 150 come out in support of ensuring that the wealthiest residents in Philadelphia pay their fair share for city services and heard from a wide range of workers, faith leaders, advocates on what a fully funded city would look like and feel like. I want to especially thank my colleague, Councilmember Jamie Gautier, for her presence at the hearing and her powerful speech. At the hearing, we saw widespread support from our city's labor movement, including speakers from ASME DC-47, ASME DC-33, SEIU 32BJ, and the Faculty and Staff Federation of Community College of Philadelphia. Underfunding is always a policy choice, and at a time when our city is struggling against numerous crises, we have an unprecedented opportunity to reject, triple down economics, tax the rich, and make deep investments in city services. And for yesterday's event, it's clear to me that working-class people in Philadelphia are hungry for policies are hungry for policies that put people before profit. So I look forward to working with this robust coalition of Philly residents and my council colleagues, not just on the wealth tax, but a wide range of policies that would generate city revenue and balance the scales of justice to allow future generations to thrive. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, council colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. A number of colleagues today talked about some of the issues that we're facing in the City of Philadelphia, specifically around crime. I heard Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Bass, as well as Councilmember Jones mention it in the midst of their remarks today. Earlier today, I introduced a bill which we're calling the Watchdog Bill. And basically, the importance of the bill is because we recognize, like Councilmember Jones said, that this legislative body has taken a number of steps to address issues related to crime. And one of those issues is the idea of trash, is the idea of nuisance behavior, that we are limited as it relates to our ability to enforce it. So the Watchdog Bill is basically designed to hopefully activate constituents across the City of Philadelphia and incentivize them to be a part of the reporting process as it relates to nuisance behavior like trash and illegal dumping and some of the other issues that we know we face as a municipality. So I look forward to working with the administration, as well as my council colleagues, over the next couple months. We want to take some time to talk to community stakeholders and different organizations across the City of Philadelphia, just so we can get their input and make sure that we're moving in a way that's advantageous to the constituents of the City of Philadelphia. So like my colleague said, this is another small step by this legislative body to do something about the nuisance behavior that we're seeing in the City of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that one. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I want to echo your sentiments in honoring the life and legacy for Pastor Herb Luss. I've known Pastor Herb Luss since I was a young man, not only as it relates to the work that I'm doing as a public servant, but just my background as a Christian in the various churches that I attended in South Philadelphia, as well as in North Philadelphia. And so he's always been a giant and a man amongst men, always been a man of his word, but most importantly, always encouraging and empowering when it comes to us improving the quality of life of our neighbors, for him particularly in North Philadelphia. But he also did a lot of work with some of the pastors I worked with in South Philadelphia. So I definitely want to acknowledge his life and his legacy. And just was on the phone with him just last week, and he was just sending encouraging and supporting words to me as it relates to the work that I'm doing. So I want to acknowledge his hard work and his dedication. I also wanted to take a moment to just impress upon, as we go through the process of the recent 31% property assessment tax increase that the residents and the citizens here in the City of Philadelphia that will be receiving. And so tonight, at St. Monica's Church at 16th and Rittner, we will be having a tax relief workshop to help people sign up for a first level of review, show people how to take advantage of the variety of tax relief measures that we pass, such as LOOP, home set exemption, and senior citizens tax freeze. And again, that's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at St. Monica's Church, and that's going to be at 2,500 South 16th Street, which is actually 16th and Shuck. So want as many people as possible to come out to participate to make sure they keep their taxes. It looks good to be back in City Council to see all my colleagues live and direct in the flesh. So good to see you too, Council President. Thank you.
You too, Councilman. Councilman, thank you, and thank you for your insistence on us having the resources to be able to do that outreach. We had a meeting over at 12th and Susswahana, hosted by former Senator Kitchen, and the people came out, and it was clear that they needed assistance and understanding this whole issue of comp and assessments and being able to do the FLA. So thank you, thank you, and the colleagues for insisting on that level of support. We should be doing these all over the City of Philadelphia. Thank you again, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. I was grateful for the opportunity to bring my bill 220-007 back to this body for a final vote today. The bill amends the Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay by expanding its geographic coverage area, providing increased prioritization of affordable housing, and refining the building requirements and demolition restrictions. I have been and remain committed to continuing to refine the overlay to prioritize the affordable housing needs of the community while not unnecessarily hampering development. I want to ensure that West Philadelphians can live within walking distance of high-quality jobs, education, health care, and goods and services. When this council first passed the overlay, we recognized that it was a necessary step, a necessary first step to avoid imminent loss of affordable housing in this critical area of the city, but that it would not be the last step, and that further refinement was needed. This bill will expand the overlay to include additional transit-adjacent locations with a particular focus on residential properties that may otherwise be susceptible in either the near or long term to market pressures encouraging commercial over residential development given the current zoning of the properties. The new building permit requirement in this overlay is a mechanism used elsewhere in the code to combat speculative demolition. It is intended to ensure that sites within the overlay are not left vacant and promptly redeveloped with affordable housing if development occurs. However, we know it isn't a perfect solution, and that this requirement may not, on its own, completely eliminate the risk that sophisticated developers will demolish large properties without immediate plans to rebuild, given the unique market forces in this area. For this reason, a temporary demolition moratorium covers all large residential properties within the overlay, those over 19,999 square feet, whether as a single lot or contiguous lots, through March of 2023. This will provide time for this council to further consider more effective ways to avoid speculative demolition of large residential parcels, which would have a negative impact on our community as a whole. The updated overlay will further ensure affordability and balanced growth by clarifying and aligning this overlay with the mixed-income neighborhoods overlay, and by requiring a higher percentage of affordable units beyond the requirements of men if developers wish to access density bonuses for other purposes. Inclusionary zoning is a proven tool used in literally thousands of localities worldwide, as the market can create and sustain more affordable units if the incentives are right. Our ultimate goal with this legislation is to support the public interest by making sure as much affordable housing remains in amenity-rich neighborhoods, which are experiencing immense commercial development pressures as we possibly can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, I'm going to piggyback again on my colleague, Councilwoman Johnson, regarding tax assessments. I just wanted to remind everyone that we are doing tax assessment appeals assistance with the Office of Property Assessment and also the BRT in our district offices. And it's something our office organized along with State Representative Darija Parker, State Senator Sharif Street, and State Senator Art Haywood. So we really want to encourage the listening public or the viewing public to come on in. Appointments are plentiful right now, but we expect that to change. And for more information, please contact our office at 215-686-3424, or on social media at Cindy Bass Philly. So we want people to take advantage of having these resources in the neighborhood. So we just wanted to encourage that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, that appears to conclude the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. So with that, the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 29, 2022, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that council stand adjourned is Thursday, September 29, 2022, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Be safe. Love you all.